Remember to silence your cell phones if you have them. Our first item was a closed session. Supervisor Nelson is still in a open meeting portion with the LAC Authority upstairs, so he'll be joining us shortly. Item number two now is approval of the agenda. I'll move it. Second by Raddig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes four zero. Items three through nine constitute a consent and agenda of 13 action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the January 30th meeting and approval of the minutes of the January 25th special meeting. Item four is approval of the claims. Item five from the county recorder deputy includes A, receive for signature the canvas of the McCannellis inter-county drainage district trustee election. And B, receive for signature the canvas of the Sand Hill Lake Port Drainage District trustee election. And C, receive for signature the canvas of the Little Sioux inter-county drainage district trustee election. Item six in board administration is approval of bond council engagement agreement, proposed issuance of not to exceed $800,000 general obligation capital loan notes. And B, approval of resolution fixing March 5th, 2024 at 4:40 PM for a meeting on authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $406,000 general obligation capital loan notes of Woodbury County, state of Iowa for essential county purposes and providing a publication of notice thereof. And C, approval of resolution fixing March 5th, 2024 at 4:45 PM for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $394,000 general obligations capital loan notes of Woodbury County, Iowa for essential county purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Item seven from the county auditor is approval of liquor license application for Anthem Golf Course in Anthem, Iowa. Item eight from human resources includes A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. And C, presentation of award certificate to Virgil Bremer.
I'll move it.
Item nine from secondary roads includes A, approve the permit to work in the right-of-way for Mitch Parker and to direct the chair to sign the permit. And B, approve the underground utility permit for Frontier Communications of Iowa LLC and to direct the chair to sign the permit. I'll second the motion by Bittenger to approve the consent agenda.
I apologize, Chair. I was a hit if I apologize.
Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes four zero. Item 10 for information from the Board of Supervisors. This is by Dan Bittenger and Sky Ranch Behavioral Services represented by Anna Bertrand. This is opioid remediation settlement request and proposal from Sky Ranch Behavioral Services for full-time equivalent positions.
Yes, I want to make a note. The backup materials somehow did not make it in the backup that I submitted. And I'll make a motion to receive the packet.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Raddig to receive. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes four zero.
I do apologize for that, Chair. It was submitted a digital copy but did not make it into the packet. But for us is just Anna Bertrand with SHIP. I get to serve as the vice chairman of the SHIP board. She's just coming to present to us a request for funding with the opioid settlement purposes. And so I'm going to turn it over to Anna and go ahead and go ahead. Will you turn on your microphones, please? There should be a button right below there, both of those.
I'm the wrong person for technology.
That's all right. And if you'll do the last one as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, all on board. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I'm Anna Bertrand with Sky Ranch Behavioral Services. We are an outpatient community-based facility located in downtown Sioux City. Our mission is to inspire and motivate change within individuals and families along the recovery journey toward balanced whole health living. I will give you a little bit of a background and purpose for the opioid settlement application that we are, or proposal for funding that we are submitting. I'd like to highlight the request for two years of opioid remediation funding, discuss the need, and share how we will deliver innovative strategies to address the need in our community and how the project will become self-sustaining within two years. In addition, I am interested in learning about any questions and feedback that you might have about the proposal. As you're aware, continued challenges face our community as it relates to substance use and mental health issues. Multiple barriers exist for both youth and adults in need of resources for themselves and our family members. We're requesting two years of funding in the amount of $242,648 per year over a two-year period. We will support and address two key needs and priorities in the Saultland area. The first one is connecting individuals to care and addressing the needs of criminal justice-involved persons. And the second is supporting people in treatment and recovery with peer recovery support specialist services. Both areas of focus are highlighted priorities in the opioid remediation funding guidance in Part One Treatment, items B, C, and D. For interventions and activities, access and connections, Sky Ranch will implement and access connections to care for the general community of Woodbury County and for individuals, youth and adults included, who are criminal justice-involved. This is a critical need for Woodbury County based on our current substance use trends and the increasing crisis of mental health. Access and connections will reduce barriers for youth and adults to get information and/or direct access to substance use and mental health clinicians. It will be available during the day, during the week, and will include at least one evening and/or a weekend access day for connecting youth, adults, and our families directly to substance use care. We also will provide phone-based support for individuals needing resources and our questions to be answered regarding accessing substance use and/or mental health care in our community. For peer recovery, we will launch peer recovery services in two specific populations. Dan had the honor of attending the Woodbury County Family Treatment Court back in December. They are in need of peer recovery support specialists to work directly with the parents that are involved in the family treatment court and then as well as in the juvenile drug court system as well. As a result of these innovative interventions, Sky Ranch will impact the lives of over 250 youth and families through one or both of the interventions listed. The value of providing access and connections as well as the peer recovery supports in our community is a demonstrator reduction in hospital admission rates and also a longer community tenure for those individuals. Funding from the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors will support a little over three staff, including their needs and community outreach costs. Sky Ranch has already identified strategies and funding streams for this product to become fully sustainable within two years so that it may continue to have ongoing benefit and impact in our community. Do you have any questions?
What is the plan after two years to be sustainable?
So we are currently licensed as an outpatient substance use and problem gambling facility. Peer recovery support services are an option to access funding reimbursement from Iowa Medicaid and their three MCOs for reimbursement for that. And then we also are licensed as a Chapter 24 accredited outpatient psychotherapy and counseling facility in the state of Iowa, so the mental health services can be reimbursable so long as they have Iowa Medicaid for insurance. And then we also are in the process of enrolling with private insurance companies and commercial insurance companies as well for reimbursement.
So is there a reason we can provide funding for one year and then be self-sustainable after one?
There is a potential that we could obtain that because of our Chapter 24 accreditation last summer, yes. So the funding will be instrumental in providing the open access hours for those people that need the help with gaining access to court committals, 229s, who don't have private insurance, who need help with filling out the Iowa Medicaid applications or Medicare applications as well for reimbursement.
And just to, you know, be kind of straight with the record here, we've had quite a few organizations come and ask for these funds since we've been awarded them.
Yeah.
And my preference, obviously, would be for a local organization like this one. We've had people from the state of Iowa come and outside sources, but it makes more sense to have somebody that's local in your community with the potential to be sustainable in your community afterwards. Like again, you know, we can't, you know, commit today here. It's an information item on the agenda, but I just wanted to ask if, you know, if there was a, you know, 12-month or 14- or 15-month option rather than the full 24 to get you rolling.
Yeah.
You know, that would be a better incentive for funds from our angle.
Absolutely.
Because we want to be able to help the most organizations, get the most people helped here.
Definitely.
Because this is a serious problem and, you know, half of the, you know, probably more than half that are booked across the street right now are there for reasons pertaining to this, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just would echo with Supervisor Raddig the concern, anytime that we start funding a full-time equivalent and then after two years, I've had the experience where people have come back and said, okay, now, you know, that funding has run out. So I think the commitment to know that this would truly be a two-year thing, but I wanted to ask, it says 45% of salary.
Yes.
What's the other 55% picked up by? Is that through the MCO reimbursement? Are there other sources of funds? I'm just looking at this fringe benefit employer of record, 45%.
Yes, yep, so 100%. So the goal would be that we would be self-sustainable, but this would give us the initiative to get everything launched, so hire the staff while we are doing the contracting with the MCOs and Iowa Medicaid for reimbursement for peer recovery and then also the contracting with the private insurance companies. So while we have open access hours, the clinicians will be available regardless of whether the person has the ability to pay or reimbursement from insurance. So the idea of the 45%, 55% would be the split that there is some coverage for their salary, but the goal would be, you know, as soon as possible, get them bumped off of that so that way they are reimbursed.
So am I understanding that the county's opioid settlement funds would be funding 45% and the other 55% would be through private insurance and MCO reimbursement?
Yep, covered by Sky Ranch.
And I wish you luck in the MCO reimbursement. I know that that's a challenge. My other question, and maybe this is for the board, Dennis, or auditor's office, or even county attorney's office, I know $485,000 is a request. Do we know the total amount of opioid funds that we have available and what percentage this is in terms of?
I think that's Dennis' question.
I can share. I spoke with Dennis about this. Right now, currently, we have roughly over about $500,000.
So this would be basically the, almost a totality of what we have?
What we have on hand right now. And then going forward, just roughly, don't quote me, but Dennis and I talked about, I think roughly we'll get, in essence, about $110,000 a year roughly added on going forward. So it's a little bit less than what was, not expected, but just, you know, once you get the final calculation, excuse me. So right now, we have about $500,000, and then every year going forward, we get about, roughly about 100, 110. So we thought it was going to be greater, but it looks like it's going to be not as big. But it'll be 1.8 million over the, Joshua, I believe, is it, is it a, I don't know if it's a 10-year? What's the timeframe? But I forget, but it's one, Dennis roughly said it'd be about 1.8 million total in funding. Is that 20, is it a 20-year settlement, I believe? Do you remember or recall?
I don't remember. I, the total amount sounds right. I don't remember the timeframe.
Okay.
And that math sounds about right.
Yeah, right.
So.
So that's what we're looking at. Yeah, today's just for information.
And then I guess my last question, thank you for that, is are there outcomes-based metrics and as far as the goals and how measurable this is that are reported back? Certainly, we want to invest in great organization, but then to be able to afterwards say, this made this impact in our community and this, you know, remediated or lacked the recidivism into our jail.
Sure.
Because I think to that point, sometimes we give these funds and then don't hear afterwards. But there are funds that will be continuing to come in. So five years from now, there's another $500,000. It could be something that maybe not to the same degree. So I just wondered how you see that reportability and?
Absolutely. So we, Sky Ranch is already contracted with, and we have an established contract of over a year and a half with a private consulting firm that is local to Sioux City. And she has expertise. She is a licensed independent social worker. And then she also has her credentialing in substance use as well. So she's got several years involved in that, but she does all of our evaluation right now. So she does quality improvement, client surveys, and tracks all of our data and outcomes in that sense as well. So she would be part of that, that we would grandfather in what we are already funding her for to apply to this project.
Now, it'd be my encouragement. I'd like to see this come back and that we might be able to take action, but whether it's quarterly or, you know, that would be helpful, I think, for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
How did you come up with 45% exactly rather than a greater percentage and less in supplies, office space? Why did you choose that breakdown?
I think when we look at reimbursement rates from insurance companies, while there is the, I guess, theory or what people know to be about the difficulties that come along with billing and reimbursement, the idea still is going to be for sustainability. So I think that we would like to look at it realistically when we think in terms of what we can fund for a salary. Plus, I think that that just drives us even further. I know that it makes me work a lot harder to know that we have to get what needs to be done and drive and ask the hard questions of those companies that have total control. So I would rather write in less amount on a salary, also just because that's the right thing to do, I guess, in my opinion. And the impact here is really on the people for Woodbury County and how can we extend our reach to them. A lot of the people, and Dan, you can speak to this, that are involved in family treatment court and drug court on the youth side. They have little to no resources. So as much as we can do to help them with transportation and what they need to get their basic needs met, it's only going to enhance their ability to get their substance use and mental health needs met too.
Well, I think with these allotments being done locally, I think we have a duty to distribute them locally if there's a qualified source or vendor. So it's a step in the right direction, I think. Any other questions?
Just other than, I mean, other than some more background, you know, Sky Ranch is becoming more and more profitable. I hate to use that word, but it's, but it is due to Anna's hard work and her.
Sustainable.
Sorry, that's true. Thank you, Chair. I mean, it's sustainable, I must use, yeah. But I've seen, we've seen a really wise stewardship of the resources, structuring the organization to be, to be sustainable and be able to, you know, bill out, do it correctly, and build a strong foundation. So I'll just say, sitting, seeing the finances of Sky Ranch, it is, is encouraging to see that and that this would be, I think, a good organization. It'd be responsible with the finances and it is local, so. And I can give you more information with that and show you guys some of those numbers from some of our board meetings and reports Anna has submitted, so. So that, see the long term, how it's becoming more sustainable and helping local, yeah, local, local youth here in Woodbury County, so.
I appreciate the relationship and the connectivity you have in sponsoring this, so wonder, might we see this back next week for action? Or what are your thoughts in terms of this board going forward?
Well, there is one more group that has approached me that want to come and present in two weeks. And so I thought, let's get Anna, Sky Ranch in here, let's have the other group come and present, and then I would say after that, so maybe in about three or four weeks, let's have, I would bring both of them back for us for action, decide on, make a decision on if we feel it's, if we feel if not, you know, we can postpone that, but just to be upfront and say, you know, with that, but.
Well, and that's, that's again, you know, the position we're in to distribute these funds. We can't just, in my opinion, just give it all to one.
Right.
Agency and, you know, if you're looking at like 15 months, that'd be roughly $300,000 here, just for numbers.
Yep.
So, and of course, Dennis isn't here, but, you know, I'm sure he'll watch the YouTube with the many other millions of viewers, but $300,000 would be about that number for 15 months, so. And again, you know, I don't want to say the same things to the same people next week that they have, you know, because we only have, what, $500,000?
Sure.
You know, we'll see where we're at and what we can do. Obviously, we want to make the biggest impact we can with what we've been gifted, so to speak.
And we did, and, you know, and we, I did speak with County Attorney Loomis about this too last week. You know, we are wanting to direct some of these funds to the jail and having in-house mental health counseling there so we don't have to transport or, you know, do any of that, but have it right there on site. And that's what some of the funds we talked about too, but, but the issue is right, determine what amount, you know. So I think this is a good discussion to have with Anna here, have this other group come in and then maybe revisit this Supervisor Taylor in about three weeks.
And I think it's good too to think not, not only in terms of what we have on hand right now, but what's going to come in in the future. So for example, could there be a scenario wherein we stood something up that somebody's borrowing some capital and we're continuing to fund? Or conversely, there's an FTE in the jail and we've expended this $485 or $500,000 among a couple entities, but now we have this person ongoing. So to think in terms of short and kind of longer term as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Anna.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 11 from Veteran Affairs, submitted by the Commission for Action. This is approval of improvement request for Executive Director Pay. Who is here to speak to this?
I am, Mr. Chair. So in lieu of seeing any Commission members present as liaison, I worked on this, and I know Supervisor Bittenger was at the last Veterans Affairs Committee meeting. It has been the desire of the Commissioners of Veterans Affairs to look sort of statewide at counties with similar numbers along with population and time and counties that are similar. And so they did a wage study. I told them early on, and I think we had this joint message, that this would be, needed to be seen as an improvement request.
Yes.
And so with that, I do want to, we had some clarification and Michelle Scaff asked some good questions in which we were trying to determine what was the intent of the Commission when they wrote this letter? Because based upon this, and they were using some FY22 numbers, there would be less than a 1% increase if Director Lonnie Coleman received the wage that they were suggesting upon July 1st of 2024. And so I'm going to ask, this is an email from Joe Donovan from the Commission to me and to Michelle as well, and wanted to distribute it but do it in public session and moved that it would be received.
I'll second the motion to receive. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes four zero.
Thank you very much. So I'm just going to, I know every one of us can read, but for the good of the public, in line with further discussion, it was the Commission's recommendation that Lonnie would receive a 4% merit pay raise effective immediately or soonest, with the mindset that she would also be eligible for and should receive the county COLA increase 3% that would affect on July 1st. And so the idea was that there would be a 4% merit raise now and then, of course, with everyone else, that's been plugged in for the 3%. I think if you look at the populations that are being compared, I believe that this is in line. And I would also note Supervisor Bittenger has rightly noted the millions of dollars that have come in and benefits, the outreach that's being done. And I know sometimes we look in terms of experiential value, but in terms of what they're asking for, for merit, I just give one piece of information that about five years ago, our previous Veterans Affairs Director was making more than our current one is now. And of course, 2019 inflation wages are much different than they are right now. So I think this is a reasonable request, one that I would support, puts us in line with other counties. And I would also say, this is something that we've done, of course, with various department heads and elected officials from time to time. I think the message, if this were to be supported tonight, would be this is a once-in-a-very-long-time opportunity. In other words, my message to them would be if the Board of Supervisors supports this, it's probably not something that they're going to support again in four, five, six, I don't know how many years, because we want these sort of things, a new look to be few and far between. So those would be my opening comments, and I don't know if you have anything to add, Supervisor Bittenger as liaison to Veteran Affairs.
Well, what I add would be is we're seeing a definitely, an increase in veteran outreach. The services are becoming more robust there underneath Director Lonnie there. We're seeing more engagement with our veterans, which is all good, which is the good things to see. My only concern with this is just that it's, I agree with you. I think overall, it's not unreasonable, but I, but I wish this would have been brought up during improvement requests, when it was requested from our budget director versus now. That's my only concern with, with this. Looking at the comparables, I don't think, it's too far off, but I do see where there's room, you could, could increase the bringing up, right, for the work being done, the amount of veterans being served, and also we're seeing the greater dollar amounts being brought into our veterans, they're receiving, you know, they're receiving the tangible benefits, which, so I think that is great to see. I just, I don't have a problem with the amount of the merit increase. I just wish it would have been brought through the kind of the proper timeframe and channels. You know, once again, it opens up the door. You do, you know, do an improvement request now, what happens, you know, by April, May, June? I mean, I know, you know, I mean, I know it's some things you can't avoid, you know, but that's my only true hesitancy with that.
Oh, why wasn't it? Is there someone to speak to that?
That I do, I do not know. I don't, Supervisor Taylor, do you know?
Yeah, I think the, I think the idea was that they were waiting to see when this should be best positioned, and I know that we were going to go through the budgets. So it ended up being submitted now. Whether or not it was held off for a week or two, I think it was just a timing issue in terms of, and when we got so far afield, then our budget analysts just showed up right on time, so.
My only, the only other thing is, I am supportive. The only thing is that, you know, that 4% was not budgeted. You know, the 3% effective July 1st is, you know, it's built into the wage plan. That's the only other thing too. Now, granted, it's, it's not going to break the bank, 4% as, you know, per se, but I just, you know, do we do, do we, the flip side, do we wait, you know, get the cost of living increase and then bring this back next year in the fall for, you know, improvement request when it's requested and it's proper timeframe and time slots?
I'm, I'm a little confused with the numbers I'm seeing here. Is it clear that they're requesting 4% on top of, after the 3% on July 1st? Are they talking about 4% effective July 1st and then 3% on top of that? And also I see financial impacts currently listed at 31, 34 an hour to 35, and then the letter says an increase of $34 per hour. I assume that means.
Yeah, so you were asking all of the same questions that I think triggered Michelle Scaff and myself to say, wait a second, what is the Commission's ask? And so, and Michelle, I don't want to put any words in your mouth. If I ever go astray here, you tell me. But that's why we asked them for this clarification. And one of the problems with this whole thing is that they are taking this to an hourly wage. And I said, you know, we never do this on an hourly basis.
Right.
Right, you're a salaried employee. And so it's much easier if you tell us what's the before and after and your intent on the salary and the fiscal impact. So I believe Michelle emailed that out to us, and if I'm over talking, that Michelle jump in and tell me.
Yes, I did calculate 4% effective 2.5, which would be the start of the current payroll through the end of fiscal year '24. The financial impact for fiscal year '24 would be $1,228.97. Fiscal year '25 would be applying an additional 3% on that amount, which is just the wage plan percentage was my understanding, and that would add 3,278 for fiscal year '25.
So roughly, the fiscal impact today, if I'm doing some quick math, would be 55, 56, something, something around there. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And I guess my only joint or response, we ask for people to put in things ahead of an improvement request. So although it may not be perfectly timed, I would hate to say you've got to wait till next year. I mean, they're within two weeks or three weeks maybe of when we'd be taking up improvement requests and a $1,228 sort of mid-year thing. I would say we've had precedence. I know we took a look at our budget analysts, building services director, HR director, even emergency management during our last meeting.
Well, yeah, in those cases, there wasn't really confusion or errors about what they made.
Right.
That was corrected four hours before the meeting by the deputy auditor, so.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused why, I mean, I mean, you said it yourself, the impact is one or two weeks that we would be taking these things up. So I'm not sure why it's even, why it wasn't requested to be a part of the budget review process and why is it being considered as, before the other improvement requests is what I'm getting at. It seems a little unfair. Melissa, were you, are these numbers, it seems to me if someone does a wage study about their wage, they're going to get the correct salary number from HR. What was your involvement with this?
I didn't talk to anybody from Commission Veterans Affairs. I did talk to Jeremy, I think Friday regarding this. I didn't realize they were doing comparables, you know, as far as Lonnie reaching out to another person, so. I had a few comparables as well, pretty close in there, but their salary range, and then the few comparables that I did get did not have veteran population involved. So I don't know if they actually do compare or not. So I don't know if they actually do compare or not.
And I.
And this is the wrong, and then they did utilize the wrong salary for their review.
When you say, when you say wrong salary, you're referring to the FY22?
Yes, I'm sorry, yep, actually the hourly, not the salary, not the salary amount.
I would say that past precedent, last couple of years, we've had a lot of requests for increases. And every time we did one or didn't do one, we did have Melissa do a study on comparables to have actual numbers, because we did have other people bring their studies towards us and they said they were, you know, 10% off or 15% off. And then when we did a wage study with Melissa, it was actually only 1% off. So I, I'm not saying that everybody out there is dishonest with us, maybe they're exactly right. I just, you know, it's our practice from the past to have HR do that. I am fine with it if we are within the numbers, if we're already done with the budget, you know. I hate to say it, but like, you maybe take 2,000 out of that stationary forms and general budget that they have. That's the stuff that they buy, you know, like their knickknacks at the fair. You know, maybe not so many fly swatters this year, you know, I, you know, that could cover it right there. So I don't really want to vote on this today. I'd rather have the input of our HR Director and some more information first. That's my preference.
I would agree. I think the proper channel is to respect what the county's done for all of the wage adjustments in the past and involve our HR Director in that study or at least share that information. And then Dennis, what, where are we at with other improvement requests?
That is the only one we have.
Okay.
And that one didn't come in the proper time period.
Well, I'm not going to make a big deal about that.
No.
It's a few weeks of a timing issue, but, but I don't like that we're considering things that were emailed a few hours ago to correct something. I think it's a lot cleaner to make sure everything is on the same page next week.
So can I just ask one, one question? Do we know, and this is what's made it a little confusing, and I think best of intentions, Veterans Affairs Commission doesn't deal with these things every day, comparing with other counties that are putting it. So the email that you have before you is from the Iowa County Veterans Affairs Director on some breakdown of statistics. Do we know right now what the Director is making in terms of hourly wage? Because I always think of it in terms of salary. Is the 31, 34?
Oh, that's not correct. For the.
So do we know what it is right now, is I guess what I'm.
3267? Is that her correct?
I can make it up here rather quickly. I do know that the figure that was in those original emails was the fiscal year 22 rate, I believe. So all of the original emails seem to be based on fiscal year 22.
Correct. My, my point is, I think that is more in their favor because they're comparing her to people two years ago. In other words, the 31, 34, and that's, I guess, what I'm asking is, what is, what is the current? Michelle, you look like you may have it.
Yes, 3267 is the current hourly rate.
Okay. So 3267 mean the current hourly rate? Blackhawk back in fiscal year 22, for example, was 3391. I'm sure they're higher than that now. But I'm, I'm fine as long as we have a way forward and something clear to tell the Veterans Affairs Commission, we want to see this next week. I'm supportive of it today, just because you had shared a couple of other comparables. I don't know if you're prepared with that information or if everyone wants to wait until next week. I just want to make sure that when we go to our next meeting, we say, this is what the Board would like to see and they're willing to take this up, yea or nay.
Well, I would say next week, if that's what can be done with involving HR, I mean, we need to.
Yep, that would be fine. I will.
Yeah, we need to make sure we're looking at accurate numbers in the backup.
I'll get the comparables to also the veteran population. I think that was important in the general population, so.
Yeah.
I'll make sure those all compare.
According to our book here, so we got the 3267 for 23. In our budget here, it would be 3365 an hour. If you add 4%, that puts it up to 35 an hour, which in there it says 34 per hour, so.
Yeah, we're just.
The numbers are not pushing in any way, shape or form.
We're just making the same point over and over again. We need to have a little more detail and accuracy to consider a raise. So I'll move to postpone.
Second.
Second by everyone, but I'll give it to Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay. Passes 5-0. Item 12 for secondary roads for action includes a, approve the contract with Calhoun Burns and Associates for bridge inspection for calendar year 2024.
Good afternoon, Mark Narra, Woodbury County Engineer. I recommend we go with Calhoun Burns and Associates again for bridge inspection this year. We're in the middle of kind of a two-year cycle. They're currently performing structural analysis for us on our bridges for compliance with the new all systems permit that the legislature approved last year. This, they're going through and determining whether our bridges can take the 10% overload allowed by the new code section. It's my hope this might replace the Governor's Annual Proclamation allowing people to run overloaded on our bridges with ag products. And it'll be good information to have once that's complete. But Calhoun Burns has done a very good job for us with bridge inspections in the past and continues to do so. And I recommend approval of the contract.
Move 12A.
I've got a question on this one, Mark.
Sure, I'll second the motion.
Okay. I've had, and this is just things that I've heard, questions that have been asked of me, whether it was by secondary road workers or the general public, that their concern is that by hiring outside folks like Calhoun and Burns to inspect our bridges, that the only way that they get a job the next year is that they find issues that aren't necessarily there and that we're downgrading our bridges at a much faster rate so that they can come back to us and say, well, look, we found all these problems with the bridges, that's why you need to hire us back next year. So what would your answer, what would you say to that?
Well, I would disagree with that. We're required by federal law to do bridge inspections every two years. We have a number of our bridges that are in that 50 to 60-year-old age bracket now that are reaching the end of their useful life. I monitor the inspections. I go over the reports every year to be sure that their, their reports are reasonable as we're putting together a five-year program for replacement. We make sure that we take a look at those. One thing I would offer is that eight, nine years ago, we'd have 60 bridges per fall inspection routine where we were lowering bridge ratings. I think this time we were down under 12. So our, we've gotten to the point over these years where, back in 2007, the benchmark I was used is we had 123 structurally deficient or functionally obsolete bridges. Since then, we're down to 57 that meet that same rating. We've accelerated our replacement of those aging bridges. We have fewer poster bridges out, than we've had out there in the past. The ones that are still showing up as deteriorating, they're deteriorating more rapidly because they've been there for a while. We've, we've taken care of a lot of those bridges that have been problems in the system and by that same means, we've had to neglect some of the others that haven't qualified for replacement or that we haven't had funding for. This year, we didn't close any bridges. So to say that they're finding things and they're accelerating, the deterioration rate isn't true. The other issue that we're having is the state code is continually changing. The legislature passed that all systems permit, which allows 10% axle overloads on all our bridges. So each truck now is allowed to run heavier across them. That puts some bridges that had been legal, and this includes some that were built between probably 1984 and 1993 in an area where they need a posting now. Because they'll carry an 80,000-pound semi, they won't carry a 90,000-pound semi, not without long-term degradation of that bridge structure. So I, I don't think that characterization is correct. All you have to do is look back at prior inspections, at the number of bridges we were posting, and then at the progress in the bridges that we've gotten replaced. And I think you're going to see that. There isn't, they aren't creating work for themselves. We've had to add bridge analysis for emergency vehicles. We're now looking at a 73,000-pound triple-axle truck that one fire department has. And that thing is a monster. Our concrete beam bridges will take it. I don't think our slabs will. But we have to analyze our slabs for that new load now, prior to January 1 of 2026. That's by law. This isn't something that our contractors creating. This is something where we're being forced to react to the code of Iowa. I guess the last thing I'd say on this topic is, you're, if you're watching our bridge program at all, and I know a lot of our people in the rural area are, we're seeing bridges on our paved road system now reaching that point where they're becoming posted, such as one truck on the bridge at a time, or with the 264040, which is basically that legal load bridge posting standard. All the bridges on D-12 are more than 55 years old now, with the exception of the ones we've replaced here within the last three years. We replaced one bridge on the Moville Blacktop that was 50 or 55 years old. We have two more to go. You're going to see a cycle where we're having to start addressing paved road bridges. We've taken care of a lot of the bridges that are, we're, we're making it difficult for people. I know Lane Tabke talked about getting from his home place to one of his farms, he had to drive 12 miles out of distance. We've eliminated a lot of those bridges on the gravel road system that were creating problems like that for our property owners. 10 more years of age on those other bridges, and now we're starting to see them hit that point too. Again, I, I'm a, I'm a bridge inspector. I'm getting Jacob trained up on that so that he'll be able to kind of watch those reviews for us into the future. That's the reason we sit down with that consultant every year and take a look at what he's got. We take a look at the recommendations for posting and see whether they're appropriate. And for the most part, I, I haven't found flaw in their work. If you recall last fall, there was one where we had the hollowed-out bridge caps on Carroll Avenue. That created a real problem for some of the people in that immediate area. That's by White Horse Ranch, if you folks know where that is on 141. But that's kind of the shortcut between 141 and D-38. You know, their analysis and catching the fact that those caps were in poor condition allowed us to protect that bridge until we were able to get new caps ordered and get a contractor hired to repair it. I think it was three or four weeks ago while I was out, Kyle was in here and you folks restored it to its prior bridge posting capacity, so. I would say that's, it might be a perception, but I can guarantee you, we're much better than we were 15, 17 years ago.
Well, just like when you guys were hauling sand from nowhere to nowhere down by Correctionville, it's important to address some of these concerns, you know.
There's rural legend, you know, just like urban legends, some of that stuff becomes a rural legend.
Yeah.
But we really are, we are really are making progress. I, I'm kind of hating to see where costs are right now, that we're kind of taking our foot off the accelerator, but we just don't have the, our money isn't going as far as it did five years ago either.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Raddick, second by myself. There is no other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay. Passes 5-0. Item B is approval of agreement with HNTB Corporation for preparing a grant application for federal aid funding the South Bridge Interchange Project.
HNTB has provided an agreement for $89,050 to prepare a grant for the infra and rural programs. These were part of the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed back in 2022. These are direct local government to federal grants that are out there and available. This grant administration is, it's, it's a laborious task to get done. The County Engineers Association has been paying between 70 and $100,000 for similar grants that have been done on behalf of the association for primarily bridges is what our association has been targeting. We're trying to leverage this $89,000 with a well-prepared grant in the hopes of getting between 20 and $22 million toward the interchange project, which would then reduce the, the level of effort that the county would need to take out of their TIF fund urban or rural areas, so.
Mr. Taylor. Dennis, is this something that's already been pre-programmed, if I can say the word, out of gaming funds?
The Board did obligate 70,000, so we need to find 19,000. I don't know if he has in his budget, or do we need to amend the gaming revenue and add 19,000 or?
I would like you to amend the gaming.
I would, I would.
I would like to also.
Yeah, I would move to approve the project agreement with HNTB Corporation allocate 19,000 additional.
In addition to the 70.
Additional gaming revenue funds and Director Chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
Mr. Taylor, second by Nelson. Any further discussion?
Just the power of Mark's negotiating skills there.
I, I'm sorry.
It's okay, no, I'm just teasing.
I did get you not to exceed, but that was the best I could do, so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay. Passes 5-0.
I meant on your negotiation to get us to use it from gaming instead of your budget.
Oh, okay, thank you. I do appreciate that.
Spirit of the original allocation was for the product.
To cover it, so.
Item C is approval of pre-construction agreement with Iowa DOT for work on Highway 20.
In 2024, Highway 20 is going to be worked on with asphalt resurfacing. They'll be milling and resurfacing from Lawton to Ida Avenue east of Moville. When we have DOT do projects like this, we ask them to put on the 50-foot approach fillets on our roads. They allow our motor grader operators to do a better job coming up against a surface without having to get their front ends out onto 65 mile an hour traveled way. So I think these benefit us from a safety perspective. They prevent a lot of gravel from being drug up on the, on the four-lane highway, which, while it's not our responsibility to take care of it, it sure is nice to contribute to better safety out there on the roads.
Mark, do you know on that Ida Avenue, the old 20 meets the new 20 about halfway between Ida and Jasper? Actually, like a third of the way up that hill, is that where they would, would actually go? Are they going to leave a quarter of a mile old stuff?
We're not doing anything on Ida Avenue south. We're only putting in the fillet on Ida Avenue on the north side.
Oh, okay. No, I meant as far as the DOT's resurfacing.
Oh, they're going, they're going to go to where the pavement ended. That is their plan. Now, if you, if you look at the map, you'll see that the two Grundy Avenue intersections are not included in this agreement. DOT is planning to do some pavement replacement in fiscal year 2028. That's going to go from Franklin, I believe it was to the four-way stop. And.
That's probably the worst stretch of road.
Yeah. It, it didn't make sense for us to put better than $15,000 into these two fillets to have them torn out in three years. So they will be included with that next project. The others, even on Franklin, are, are outside of the scope that's going to be disrupted by that pavement replacement, so. DOT had that, didn't have that in the agreement. When I questioned him on it, I wasn't aware of that later project. But I do concur, it's a good idea to leave those off. It's a good idea to leave those off for now.
I move it.
Second.
Mr. Nelson, second by Rattig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Item D is approval of resolution committing funds and project maintenance for old Highway One Forty-One road improvements.
We're looking at, we've had in our five-year program to improve old Highway One Forty-One from Holly, basically Holly Springs to Smithland. We had done some really extensive repair work out there. I think it was in twenty-fourteen or twenty-fifteen when the center line joint was getting bad on those. We had concerns with that. We had eight, nine inches that could have trapped a motorcycle tire. We did quite a bit of work out of our maintenance budget to repair that. We're starting to see some more of those areas tearing out. With our, with the pressure on our foreign market funds right now with the higher-than-anticipated construction costs, this looked like a good project that was federally eligible that we could make an application to the RPA for, so. It's a standard agreement that we're saying we're going to take care of it for the next twenty years after they put that federal investment into it. I think it's a strong candidate for funding.
Well, I know the folks down there really feel, and it felt for some time that that road needed replace.
Yeah, I think our asphalt roads, they need to, they all need a good deal of work, but, you know, our money only goes so far. Right now, we're on about a thirty-year return for resurfacing. Ideally, it ought to be twenty years, but the funding isn't there for that at this point in time.
I move it.
Second.
Mr. Nelson, second by Rattig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Item E is approval to direct the county engineer to work with the city of Correctionville to survey plat and allow the city to purchase the property for the construction of a city park.
The mayor of Correctionville had been looking for a location for a city park that was on the, where all the housing is within the town, and I think they approached you as well.
Yeah, so former mayor Kathy Hoffman contacted me. So in Correctionville, they actually don't have a city park. They share it with the school, Rare Valley School, which is clear on the east side of town, and they kind of have a sharing agreement. Well, unfortunately, that's not where a lot of their residents live, is on that side of town, and they're wanting to do some upgrades and that, but it's not their property. It's the school's property, and so they're kind of thinking, well, we could better serve our community by having a park more centrally located, and then we're kind of detached from the school. So they contacted me and we talked with Mark, and we own a lot, a grass lot that is in between the city of Correctionville's maintenance building and then a building that we have that we just mow.
Right.
I mean.
Yeah, all we're doing is cutting grass there right now.
And it's pretty much right in the middle of town. So it's, that was the spot that they identified and.
The current council, apparently, the city clerk informed me, they haven't fully decided on a park. That was what the old mayor wanted. I'm not sure where the new mayor is. They may be wanting to expand their city maintenance facility and build a park, but the point is, they can make a lot better use of this bare ground than what we ever will. If we do any expansion for secondary road facilities in the Correctionville area, it's going to be at our primary shop on Naughty Pine Road, which is on the southeast corner of town, not right in the middle of town, so. I think it would be great if we could provide this to the city. They have better use of the property. I had asked, April, I think, is the new city clerk, residential lots there are selling for about fifteen thousand dollars. That's what they offered to match with this location. That's fully acceptable to our department.
I'd move to direct the county engineer to work with the city to survey plat and allow the city to purchase property for the construction of a city park.
Second.
Mr. Taylor, second by Bittenger. Hearing no other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So once Mark has a survey, the legal description, it will have to come back for the formal sale process, the public hearing, and it'll be a directed sale to the city of Correctionville, so it'll come back on the agenda in that form.
Joshua sent me the code section, so we'll have all the paperwork prepared once we have that ready to go, so. Appreciated that review on that one, Joshua.
Yep.
Thank you. Item thirteen from the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Taylor and Bittenger, is for action, approval of utilization of three hundred thousand dollars from gaming revenues in order to achieve flat tax rates in the countywide and rural levies. Who would like to start?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So this is over the last week and a half in your absence, we've been having some discussions on what is the gap now that we've gone through almost all of our budgets, and I know we have a few to take up tonight, but we're pretty well there. And so this board has made a lot of cuts, aligned revenue to expense, eliminated reserves within reserves like the county library we saw, and done a lot of great work over the last few weeks. And so after the recommendations of what I understand our budget analyst is putting forward, we're within two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars on the countywide levy. If I misstate any of this, Dennis, please correct it, and two-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-seven on the rural basic levy in order to achieve a flat tax rate. So toward this end, we ask you to approve three hundred thousand dollars in gaming, which will cover that gap, plus we kind of programmed in if you were going to look at the Veterans Affairs Improvement Request, which is the only one that we know is out there. Gaming revenue is projected to be at one million, one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-one. That's projected plus incoming. And while we originally, or I was originally thinking it'd be six hundred thousand, I do think tapping the brakes and pulling back the reins a little bit, understanding FY-25 is going to be a thing, meaning that it's going to be a real challenge, that it would be wise to use this much money. We can achieve a flat tax rate, and so that's the first portion of this agenda item.
Dennis.
I want to clarify one thing. This will achieve a flat tax rate as it stands now in the general basic, general sub, rural basic. We still have to come up with one million, three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars to get to a total tax, flat tax rate. We still have to come up with a million, two-hundred-and-some-odd thousand to achieve that.
And we were going to do so by a transfer of reserves, is that correct?
I have three ideas to make this balance out, but again, we are trimming our reserves down to where we have a serious problem in the next fiscal year, which we have to think about a little bit. We're going to be using up, if all these proposals go through, that we have, we're burning up almost four million dollars of gaming, local option, new interest. All these funds are unspent and all these budgets that will not exist the next year, twenty-five, twenty-six. That is a major problem because we can't increase taxes except general sub, debt service. So this, I know we're focused on this, but we better be careful and focus a little bit on twenty-five, twenty-six. I don't know where we're going to make up four million dollars. We can't increase taxes.
But just for clarification, the item itself doesn't result in a countywide flat tax rate, it's a step towards it, is that?
It's a step towards it, yes.
I would say that knowing, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, knowing that the plan was to transfer from reserves in order to take care of the debt service levy, that this would, in addition to all the great work that everybody's done, be the last little hurdle in achieving that, is an accurate statement.
Yeah.
But another step still remains, and Dennis has some ideas. I would say we discussed, not to get off topic, but the unspent funds due to the delay on the LAC project, are there other departments we can look at that have unspent salaries, for instance?
And I have.
And I assume the answer is yes?
Yes, we have some in county attorney's office, a big chunk there. We have some in the correctional facility. That totals about, between the two there, about a million, one-twenty-five. But, and what I'm thinking about is use about eight-hundred-seventy-two thousand, two-fifty of gaming, two-fifty of local option to balance out the debt service.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that that transfer of reserves is not necessarily, as we, for the same reasoning we did it for the other department building services, we would do it for these. It's not as if it's reserves from taxation as much as it is reserves from unspent.
Unspent and unobligated gaming.
So let's, let's, so.
That's another issue.
That's a piece of, I would say, good news. We can, we can look at those numbers when we get to that point, but let's get back on this topic, so. Did you have anything else, or Mr. Bittenger?
Do we have a motion on this yet?
No, I've got nothing else to add. I would, I would approve it, yeah. I'm in favor of it, and so I think Jeremy stated it well.
The only request I have is you allocate the three hundred thousand to the general supplemental fund. That's where we have a problem. Because of that, we're going to increase the tax rate, the same amount's going down general basic, so we have a flat tax for general fund. So one's going up and one's going down, and this will be in addition, which is not taxation. And then we still got another problem down the road here with our liability fund that's going to play with us a little bit. Not a whole lot, but a little bit.
So I would go ahead and move then, and please correct me if I'm wrong on this, to approve utilization of three hundred thousand dollars from gaming revenues to general supplemental in order to achieve flat tax rates in the countywide and rural levies. Do we need to have, so, and let me.
I just don't want people to think that now, oh, great, we're flat. We still got a bigger problem with debt service, and that's the countywide. So I'd say a flat tax rate in our three tax funds, general basic, general sub, and rural basic.
So can I, I'm sorry, I know I made a motion, and please just let it die. Can I ask one, one question?
Yep.
When we talked, we were two-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars away on the rural basic levy, is that correct?
Yes, we're to the good, and.
To the good, meaning that there's not.
Hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, one, three-seventeen, to the good.
So there is no gap on the rural basic levy?
Rural basic's fine. And we got a proposal today, you'll see as we go through here on allocations from gaming and local options.
So then, you would agree that the three hundred thousand should be to general supplemental?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then my original motion, if I could resurrect it, Mr. Chair.
Has been resurrected.
Can you repeat it once, please?
Yeah, to, thank you, to approve utilization of three hundred thousand dollars from gaming revenues to general supplemental in order to achieve flat tax rates in the countywide levy.
Still second.
Mr. Taylor, second by Rattig. Any other discussion? Well, this is the typical course the county's done for the last, I think, nine years, as we look at the gaming funds as a last resort item to bridge a gap, and so it's nice to see that we're able to do that again. And we will come up with the reserve funding required to achieve a flat tax rate for FY-25 due to unspent funds from prior budget year that are due to the LAC project delay and not anything else. So there's some, some good and bad that comes with that delay, and we're going to utilize those savings appropriately to benefit the taxpayer and not another, for instance, project. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero.
And if I could just make one small informational thing. The four-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars that's in ARPA, and I just want to state this publicly, I have looked to that to provide tax relief because it's something that we can do, and I've been cautioned, I think admirably so, by our liaison to the Law Enforcement Center authority, and I think this board generally agrees, that that's kind of the last monies that are available. However, I don't want to take our eye off the ball. On the day of the opening, I would anticipate an agenda item, I think we should look to once that facility is open, to expending two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand in both FY-24 and 25 on something like sheriff's vehicles, because it needs to be obligated by the end of this year or lost. And what I don't want to do is just sort of have that money out of sight, out of mind, and not dedicated to something that could provide relief in future years. So I didn't put anything, not doing anything with that money today, but if we get that facility open, then we should do something over a two-year period.
Again, I'd caution this a little bit, Jeremy, because what we're doing, using ARPA funds as a Band-Aid to cover twenty-four, twenty-five vehicles, that money will not be there the next year. Where do we get the two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars? This is true, everything we're doing, they're Band-Aids that cover us, but this coming year, the next year, I can't describe what it's going to be like. But you got to remember, ARPA should be used for one-time things or operating expenses that were, like the county attorney trying to get people here, those are one-time, they're done.
Yeah.
And then they're budgeted.
And we may have just a little philosophical disagreement. My, my thing is, if it's for equipment, it's going to help reserves that we know are, you know, being degraded, degraded, and at the same time, what's the alternative? If there truly aren't one-time uses, and very few times can we buy just a one-time thing, it does provide a better position for the county. Otherwise, we just lose it.
And just for clarification, these four-hundred-and-seventy thousand are within the bucket, so to speak, or category of standard allowance uses, which can be used for general government services.
Right, the county pulled back eight-hundred, or nine-hundred-and-forty-one thousand.
So yes.
Yes.
Yes, so they can be used for any services the government provides essentially. So we're holding this off. My understanding is that we're holding it off so that we don't artificially lower the rates and be subject to adverse legislation, as the legislature likes to do, freezing rates, making us do certain things with our rates. We're responsibly reducing the rate incrementally and not having this yo-yo effect, but if we don't need it for that purpose, budget-wise, we're going to use it for things that we would spend money on, one-time uses anyway.
I have just one more comment.
Yes.
We have to buy a vehicle, a sheriff's claw or a bear, that's three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. We do not have budgeted anywhere. Now, some of this, and that's a one-time deal, that's the armored vehicle they used in that one deal down Hornet. We don't have one. They've already ordered it because the board was pretty much in favor of that, but we did not determine where the funds are coming from. So maybe this ARPA can cover that possibly.
It's a possibility, and it's a bear cat, we're not ordering a bear.
Yeah. But just make it aware, that is budgeted anywhere in our budgets.
Typically, it's got to be approved by the board before.
You pretty much gave an approval when he came to the board that day. Now you can talk to the sheriff about it, but it's ordered already.
Was it on the agenda?
You'll have to turn your mic on again, Dennis.
I muted everyone because there was some sound.
I think we expressed, I think we expressed interest in it. I don't remember us having it on the agenda to purchase.
Well, it, all I can tell you, it is purchased, it's going to be delivered sometime this summer, so somebody's got to come up with the money. Now, originally, we talked about donations, MUR grants, things like that, so it could cut it down, weigh down, or pay for all of it possibly. But the fact is, it's ordered, and somebody's got to pay for it. I'm just making everybody aware of this.
All right, we're getting off topic.
Yep.
Good, so we ended on a good note there. Item fourteen, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Taylor, three items for action. First, A, approve the creation of a maintenance fund for the historic Woodbury County courthouse.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is a follow-up from what I thought was a really good discussion on January twenty-third I promised to bring back at a future date after getting a lot of input. So without reiterating all the points from before on the historicity of this courthouse, the importance of it to our community, on the tributes to military service and life, and the eighty-to-one-hundred, twenty million dollar value that's put on it, this is an opportunity that we could put into practice, what we talked about. We're at a position presently in FY-25 where we can keep taxes flat and make sure that we still have a healthy reserve level, and this will allow us to save for the future so that we're not limited, whether it's one-point-two, one-point-five million. And this will allow us to save for the future so that we're not limited, whether it's one point two, one point five million or whatever bond limitation Iowa code limits us to. So from the discussion, I'm trying to take the input of everyone, including our, our treasurer and some others that spoke. And so the idea here would be, um, the first year expenditure of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would begin the courthouse long-term capital improvement project fund as a separate fund but housed under general basic and bearing interests. And Dennis, I believe, said that that is a possibility to house under general basic and do so as a separate division.
Separate fund under general basic, a subsidiary fund under general basic, yeah, plus interest to vary.
Okay. Uh, second portion of this would be that the fund would be guided by policy, uh, published annually for transparency and fiduciary accountability purposes. Part of the annual budget review process to be examined publicly during budget hearings. I'd anticipate that we would see this every year. Um, whether there's any allocations being made out of it or not, um, but it'd be something that would be subject to public scrutiny. And so the policy language here establishes the purposes that the funds shall be used for long-term capital improvement projects to preserve the life, structure, efficiency, building envelope functionality, artistic integrity, and conformity to the remarkable historicity of the National Landmark Building guided by the Building Services Director, Historic Preservation Society. It also enumerates some prohibited uses, like general operations, repairs or maintenance under fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and shall only be for expenses approved by a majority of the Board of Supervisors. I thought that was important so that this isn't just a, you know, discretionary slush fund at the behest of a Building Services Director. Um, I thought it was important also to say that funds shouldn't be transferred, de-obligated, or used for other building purposes such as funding operations or adding newer part-time employees. Uh, there would be three primary sources of funds. One is the direct appropriation from the Board of Supervisors. And so, um, this policy language could be captured that we want to be efficient with taxpayer dollars, fiscally responsible, and keep debt um, with, you know, interest payments that go along with it low. And while establishing that a future board is not legally bound by this, uh, dedicating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, which is about fifty percent of non-tax gaming revenues, shows a commitment to taxpayers to invest long-term and the sustainability of the courthouse. And that annually, each Board of Supervisors shall set a level of funding for the upcoming fiscal year. So we may have suggested that future boards do fifty percent of gaming revenue, but each board, each year, will be determinative of that. The second source of funds would be funds that are dedicated to courthouse repairs and maintenance, meaning any year in which they're not expended. Instead of reverting back to general basic, those funds that were dedicated to the courthouse but unspent would go into this fund rather than go back to reserves. And then number three, we do have a courthouse foundation fund. I believe it has about twelve thousand dollars. I would think that it was within the original intent of those that made donations to it to have it go to the courthouse, which I don't know of any funds that are being expended from there right now. So it would seem to be a reasonable request, um, that people can continue to make tax-deductible donations to the courthouse and that we could ask for the courthouse foundation funds, uh, to be subsumed here. So that's the aerial overview. Sorry to be worried about it, but I thought those things should be captured.
Is a resolution not better than a, than calling this a policy because we can't bind? You know, I can't create a policy that binds you, Mr. Taylor, as far as how you vote on financial items. And for me to propose that would be sort of odd, uh, but a board resolution is the intent of the majority just as well as, as a motion, but. So have you, I mean, are you considering your agenda item to be policy or?
I would, I would think that the.
Cleaned up after.
I would think that the approval of the Board of Supervisors would establish that if the motion was to create such a policy. If a resolution strengthens it by any means, um, I'm fine putting it in that form. I mean, I don't know that it binds a future board anymore, um, or less than having it in the form of a resolution. But if it's, if that strengthens it, I'm certainly willing to do that.
I just mean pointing to a standalone, you know, text with the, with the single topic is a little easier than saying, look at the agenda item from February thirteenth.
Yep, the point's all taken.
Were we waiting on anything from Kenny as far as a project list or? Before doing this?
I don't think so.
We weren't? Okay.
He was coming up with the list for the LAC.
Mm-hmm.
On that, you know, his general maintenance costs versus any above normal operating costs.
Okay.
Yes.
And the other thing I would say, just to be fully transparent about this whole thing, is I know item B has the approval of, you know, where the funds are coming from. Um, so to me, item A would establish this fund with the different parameters. And I tried to take into account the different, uh, input that we got. Um, I think it was Supervisor Bittenger who mentioned that it should just be for this one building rather than all. Um, and then think about some of the uses that we would not want a future board to say, well, we added three maintenance personnel to the courthouse. Well, that wasn't the, you know, so try to be as, as clear as we could about what it could and could not be used for.
So how is the, how is the public supposed to be aware of the provisions of this if the minutes and the papers will just say certain policy provisions? It, I assume we're not going to be paying for texts that includes all these bullet points in the agenda item?
No, I'd put it on the website.
Okay.
On there explaining what the policy is, what includes when you decide, all that, because that won't actually go into the newspaper. Because all you're doing here is passing where the money's coming from, what it's for, the detail, the policy you guys will evolve with. And then you can put it in there so that people do know what's this money gonna be spent for.
Well, what this really is then is a procedure.
Yes.
And it can be, uh, and.
Yep.
And it can be copied into a procedure, into the handbook of procedures that we have somewhere.
Yeah, we can work on that.
That we can endorse, so to speak. I mean, it's just something other than look at the agenda item from February thirteenth. I mean, no one else would, no one would be able to find it. Okay, any other comments?
With this, with this motion here of doing this, and I, I agree with it totally. But we now redos our, um, unallocated gaming revenues from one million eighteen thousand three ninety-one down to four hundred and forty-nine thousand three ninety-one. And I still have something for the debt service to go yet, so there won't be a lot of money like there has been in the past. But they're all things that we can cover now. And the way you're doing it, you're using new money coming in and not carryover money for this motion here. Which is good.
Speaking to item B, are you talking about, can I talk about anything on it right now? And I, item B, is that, can I, can I talk about that right now? Item B, or you want to say that, item A right now?
Um, is the board okay talking about the funding allocation before we approve the creation, since they are linked? I think we're okay with that.
Okay, so I want to make sure.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, in light of that, what, what Dennis is speaking, I, I would say, in light of some of the current needs in the liability fund, I would say, can, I would reduce that by a hundred thousand, start with a hundred and fif- I mean, yeah, reduce by a hundred thousand, down to one fifty and start there. Just to give us potential more gaming revenue to be able to use for the liability fund. Um, I mean, I, I'm all for the two fifty normally. I think it's needed and it's a good start, but just, that's my only, I'm fine for the rest. I just think save more in the, in the gaming revenues, but that's my real true comment on that.
Can I just bring up one, one thing in, in response? I like the idea of setting a, I don't want to say a precedence, because again, I know you can't line a future board. But if we move that target in two fifty, even if you take it times ten, is only, you know, two and a half million dollars in light of what this building needs. I think it'd be better to start off with two fifty and say, we're gonna try to make that commitment every year and find some ways to help the liability fund elsewhere, rather than saying, well, last year you went from two fifty to one fifty. I worry that the next year, somebody might say, why don't we just go down to fifty? Um, one question I have, and this is a question for everybody, did we do something with the liability fund previously? Did we make an increased allocation?
Okay, we, we did increase it from one million to two, one million two hundred thousand. With information that's come forward, that one million two hundred thousand only cover our current expenses, let alone potential lawsuit, potential attorney fees. We're coming back probably next week or the week after with a two hundred thousand dollar increase there, which then throws our general sup, that's where the money's levy, out of balance again. Then we have to find two hundred thousand somewhere or raise taxes two hundred thousand. Dan's right.
And my, I guess my other question is, I know one of the reasons that we wanted to, I wanted to separate this out is that there was some discussion of this board in relation to the LAC authority's maintenance during this first year where we had something like two hundred thousand, and some of us took a breath and, and paused and said, are we really gonna need all of that there? And I know there was an LAC authority meeting, so I know all of this is kind of swirling around. But that was another place where, um, there could be some potential. In other words, if we said, hey, we don't know that we're gonna need to expend two hundred thousand dollars first year at the new LAC, perhaps we can use. So I'm not trying to muddy the waters. I'm just trying to look at all potential sources.
Quick question, and for the number two on the funding sources, what, Dennis, what is our, do we have any current money from FY twenty-four that's, uh, dedicated to courthouse repairs and maintenance, which not, has not been expended?
Uh, that was already, that was already figured out when we transferred nine hundred thousand from the LAC budget. Now the courthouse, he said he's gonna use it all.
Okay.
So that's not really an option there.
Okay. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you. Um, so to answer Jeremy's question, um, my motion failed today at the LAC. So there will not be, um, two hundred thousand of, of help there. Um, I'm in favor of A and C. I think at any time, we can, I would assume at any time, we could, um, allocate two hundred and fifty. I think that's a good number to start with, but I would assume that we could allocate that next month or in April as we work our way through the budget process. I would be more in favor of just waiting, um, at this time. Um, I'm fine with A and C, but B, I would just, I would probably just put it on hold for a month or two, get through the budget process, see what we have, see what other stuff is lying out there waiting for us, and then if there's nothing and we're fine, then I'm all for it. So that's my two cents.
And we still set it up this passage. If you just do C, we'll still set it up. So it's all gonna be in place. You can move. There may be years you have excess gaming revenues. You may transfer more than two fifty. Or you may have a budget that has money there. I hate to say that because we're gonna need it next fiscal year, but there's options here where money might come in. Dale, get to where you want to be.
I'd be supportive of getting through budget and seeing where we're at. I'd be supportive of that, yeah. And then if we can do the two fifty, do the two fifty.
Um, and also because it's, C is linked to this whole thing. Um, the reasoning for liquidating the courthouse foundation is simply because we don't have to have another meeting to expend the funds.
Well, that too, that's a bonus. But the other, the other idea there is, if people have made donations to the courthouse, I can't remember the last time that someone said, you know, this from the courthouse foundation ended up funding this. And so my, my heartburn is, let's say that, you know, Mary Ann in her, uh, elder years made a donation to the courthouse foundation, has she actually seen that money be utilized for something? Um, and my hope would be putting it here with the parameters that we have around it, um, that it can be utilized uh, and that people can contin- continue, if I'm understanding correctly, to make tax-deductible donations and know that it's going to go to the beautification and preservation of the courthouse.
Coming to Woodbury County too, and we're a five oh one, I believe we're tax-exempt anyway.
So we would still be able to receive tax-exempt funds and, into the.
Because the foundation's a five oh one C, separate from Woodbury County.
And I can, I can answer the question, who made the last donation and what it was used for, because it's up there hanging on that wall up there.
Right. We, we have hardly spent any funds since the centennial. It's just been sitting there.
Uh, but we can transfer those funds as they come to this, this new fund?
Yeah, once, once we set this up, transfer the money where that fund exists, so people can, if they want to donate, we'll put it in that building fund for the courthouse. Under the guidelines, how you want to spend it.
Okay. Um, and, and so item C is a request that doesn't actually transfer. Is that correct?
Oh, it is a transfer.
It'd meet as a foundation to.
Request to transfer foundation, be transferred to the new fund, so that is a transfer.
Well, courthouse foundation is us.
Yes.
In a separate meeting, correct?
Do we need to, and I'm kind of looking down to my left at the now-lit mic, do we need to have a separate courthouse foundation meeting in order to make that happen?
Or can we just steal it?
No, I think the fa- the foundation needs to meet.
From ourselves.
And I don't know a lot about how the foundation is set up, but I know that historically, there's meetings from time to time when, um, there was gonna be a use of those funds. And so I, I don't think the supervisors in your meeting can say, we're taking those away. Um, it would have to be a foundation meeting that does that.
So that would be something that we could schedule fifteen minutes before another meeting and do? So, uh, I think it's probably not necessary for us to appro- approve requesting it from ourselves. I don't think we'll get it. Um, I would say as regards, and I know we're not to item B yet, but I'm fine with that. I think it's wise. I know we have a lot of moving parts. I just would say two things. One is expect that it will come back, um, in, in terms of wanting to see the establishment of two hundred and fifty thousand. And then the second is, although I'm appreciative of the LAC authority, um, not wanting to take that on, I also think that it's worth a second look for us, whether we really think two hundred thousand dollars is the right amount or not. And maybe it's half of each, right? Maybe it's a hundred thousand there and, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand or a hundred and fifty from gaming. I don't know. That's for another discussion, but I'm appreciative if, if we get A tonight, so.
I'd, I'd move, I'd move, um, A.
I'd second it.
So is the motion to simply approve the creation of the courthouse long-term capital improvement project fund a division, a division of general basic?
Yeah, with the policy provisions as laid out in the backup materials.
Okay. Uh, because the policy provisions say we have to approve item B, and if we're not gonna approve item B tonight, then.
I would just say minus item B or. I mean, all the other, I guess what I, I would like to see is all the other policy provisions, if everybody's okay with them, stick. Um, so that this board is approving, yes, we want it for these purposes, which I believe all of the collective input has, has been toward those uses, and no, we don't want it for these other things. You can't just transfer it to, you know, some maintenance shed or somewhere else in the county or to help the twenty thirty-eight board figure out its, you know, its woes. So I think these are the things that, unless there are changes that, you know, we could put on the website and we could capture.
And this falls in concurrence with the maintenance fund set up by the LAC. It needs to be defined what it's gonna be used exactly. And that's what you're gonna do with your maintenance fund, and that's kind of what they need to do with theirs. It is defined in there, but it's very broad, and it probably needs some changes.
What I would prefer is it would say certain polis- policy, or certain provisions is laid out by written procedure, and for these things to be summarized in a memo I can sign and include in a procedure in our list of procedures.
I, I can.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. And then I'll, uh, see something up and, and then you can.
Yep.
Sign it.
So is that the motion by Mr. Bittenger and seconded by Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other further discussion?
Can I read back what I have?
Yes.
Motion by Bittenger, seconded by Taylor, to approve the creation of the courthouse long-term capital improvement project fund, a division of general basic with certain policy provisions as laid out in a future crafted memo.
With certain provisions as laid out by written procedure.
Okay.
Any other further discussion? So yeah, if you can send me, send me that cleaned up and. All right.
And authorize the chairman to sign.
Yes.
Can we add that in?
Uh, yes. Uh, yes. Authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
I would move to-
Uh, table item B.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, seconded by Bittenger, to table item fourteen B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero.
And likewise C, or delete item C, or move on from item C, whatever you want to do.
Well-
Any one of those is appropriate. Delete.
I'll second the motion to remove item fourteen C from Taylor. Good. Hearing no discussion. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. All right, thank you. Item fifteen, reports on committee meetings.
I've got quite a few, so unless somebody else wants to get theirs on first. I apologize for my late arrival tonight, was upstairs finishing the LEC meeting. As I mentioned just a little bit ago, I had a agenda item. We were looking to allocate repairs and maintenance portion of Kenny Schmidt's budget, our building services director, and have the LEC cover that for this first year in light of the ongoing delay and, and the damage that is, the county is incurring. That was a long discussion today, it was probably about a half hour. I think several issues that the LEC has is there's a lot of disagreement, and, and we have work to do not only in the LEC, but with the board of supervisors on what we view as operational costs and what we view as repairs and maintenance. I would say Ron and myself are kind of on maybe different ends of the spectrum on that. And I think, you know, Kenny Schmidt and I have talked about several things, and we have our disagreements, but we've talked about that we need to have a work session with the LEC to work through some of the stuff, and that the board of supervisors needs to have a work session too. And then we still need to get down to brass tacks on what we think that threshold should be as far as a one-time expenditure that would come out of the LEC maintenance fund. Is it twenty-five thousand? That was a number that, that Ron threw out today that he stands very firmly, he believes anything over that the LEC should cover. Anything under that is Woodbury County. But I think that's something that all of us need to, need to work on. And we filled out those surveys with Kenny a couple of weeks ago, would like to get that information, maybe having agenda item where all of us sit here and go line by line and say, well, if that's, that's on us, or no, that should be on the LEC. Excuse me. So that's some things that we definitely have to clarify as we go forward. So other than that, I think that was initially, or essentially, the most important part of the, the LEC meeting. Moving on to conservation board, we had a meeting Thursday, the, the septic work that's being done at Little Sioux Park, you know, we were putting in that new septic, so they're running new lines, they're making, they're taking out some camping spots, making them all bigger to, to fit a lot of these bigger campers. And the, the work on the septic lines themselves are almost done. There's two different contractors, one that's going to be putting in the, the septic kind of digester system, and one that's doing the lines. The line work is nearly done, which is great. It's been a great winter, hardly they've had any frost in the ground, so they've been able to get in there, get that done, because we want to have this thing completely done, seated and ready to go by Memorial Weekend. So that was good news. There was a, excuse me, a new hire at Brownslake. They hired an excellent, excellent person there, and they're going to be conducting interviews for Southwood. They had, I think you said fifteen applicants, and they were like seven that were really, really good. So they were, they just, they couldn't believe the, the pool of applicants that they've had for that. So maybe times are changed a little bit. That's, I think that's all I had on conservation. I went to the county library last week, Thursday, and met with the folks there. And I still have some concerns about their budget reserves. I've talked with several of the library directors, board directors, and none of them were aware that they had a reserve account or that it was that big. So they got to obviously clean up some information there, but what they were concerned was in the past, they told, they had been told that they had to pay one hundred percent the cost of, of a new bookmobile. And now they're being said, now they're being told, well, no, we're going to pay for that. So I think they would like some reaffirmation from the board that, you know, a bookmobile is, would be a great CIP project, and that they shouldn't have to fundraise, or have two and, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in their reserves in order to, to pay for something like that upfront. But they did say they would like to have all the supervisors come out and walk through the, the library and, and see all the things that they do, and hear about all the great things they do. And, you know, I, I live out there, so my kids are there weekly, and so they get to take that in and have a lot of fun, but it's, it would be good for all of us to get out there and do a walkthrough. I believe that that's all I have.
Well, just for ease, I'd be, I think it'd be okay if the board wanted to schedule a, a meeting to, to have that tour, so we could all-
So I, I was invited by McDy, Mowville's Economic Development Group, to come and give an update last week, and they said exactly that, that they would like to host a meeting, a supervisors meeting in Mowville, and they would like to do kind of a tour of businesses, tour of Main Street, and then a tour of the library, and we could have the, the meeting in the community center, obviously next door to the library, so we could kind of cross a lot of things off at once. But not to leave anybody else out, you know, Lawton has been asking us to come out and have a meeting in their new community center. You know, Correctionville's asked us to come out, Anta's asked us to come out, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us. But, but anyway, so McDy was, we, we talked about that, and, you know, they, they really wanted to showcase, you know, everything going on Frontage Road, on Main Street, all those kinds of things, and so they would like to kind of have one big afternoon hoopla, so.
Joshua, would it, are we, would you advise us if we were going to do something like a rural town hall combined with a, with a tour for supervisors to have the tour portion, a notice of gathering, or could it be a part of a meeting, or is that not allowed because we can't guarantee necessarily complete public access if we're going through a hallway of a building, for example?
I think a notice of gathering would probably be the way to go, just be mindful of that it's in a, you're receiving information, and you're not really in a position to be able to talk about county commitments, or deliberating on, on any county response, but you're, you're basically observing and receiving information.
Okay.
Say, I know in, in the past, you know, over at the city, we did like a bus tour after the flood with all the council members on there, and media was invited to go along. So if, if there's, you know, any question, I guess as long as media is always allowed, you're, you're covered, is what I had understood. I also had a mayor Sloan ask if we would be able to go out to their community. So we didn't do any last year, but I do know the year before we were in Mowville. And, you know, they do request it more often than the other cities, but I wouldn't mind if we hit up six this year instead of three, because we're kind of making up.
Yeah. I think we should, and I think that combining it with a tours like you mentioned is a great idea.
So I, I've actually, that's led me, I'm sorry, let me into two other things that, so along the same lines in Mowville, and this has to deal with Secretary Rose and Mark Nera, this is something we've been talking about for a while, but there is a lot of development interest from, whether it be the city, whether it be McDy, whether it be a private business in Mowville that they want the corner where our county maintenance shed is, not where the engineer's office is, but where the maintenance shed is. And I know from talking with Mark, and he can come up here too if he wants, but that is one building that is absolutely on the radar for replacement. It's extremely old, it's very unsightly, which the city of Mowville has not appreciated. It's the first thing you see when you come into town, and it's a county building, so they have no control over it. But the question becomes, logistically, talking with Mark, it makes total sense for us to move to a new site, to build a new building, and actually combine, we've got two different sites outside of Mowville where we've got dirt and iron at another site that's actually, in my opinion, it's on a bad curve, and it's, it's a liability to travelers. We've had some really bad accidents there. I lived right next to it, so I, some of them you really scratch your head, but it'd be nice to consolidate everything. We lose a lot of manpower and efficiency by having to run equipment. I know it's only three miles, but when you're running payloaders and stuff over there to go load things, you lose a lot of time and efficiency. But the question becomes, when we sell that property, obviously that's not near enough to cover what it's going to take to, to buy a few acres, build a new maintenance shop, that kind of thing. And so, you know, obviously this is not something we're going to do in this next year, but in the next two or three, I think it's something that absolutely needs to happen. I think the communities, you know, wants to be really aggressive and try to develop that. And so, Mark, if there's anything I've missed that you'd like to throw out there?
Yeah, I do have some numbers now that I can throw at you. I don't have land replacement valuation there yet. I had spoken to a nearby property owner who has some development acres that lay south of Mowville. I don't have a price from him yet, but he does have a willingness to perhaps sell some ground to us, and it would be ideally located. But I did get prices from our architect. Just to give you some history, back in two thousand and nine, the county had scheduled to replace that mobile shed with a brand new shed on that site at the corner. At the public hearing, we got derailed a little bit when we were offered the building that is now our office and facility at seven fifty-nine East Frontage Road. We got in there for roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the brand new building would have cost us, but we still had need for the, the storage and the, our salt storage building, our, our gravel stockpiles are all up there. But, long story short, that same building today to construct, by the architect's best estimates, about two point three million. That's a six bay shed similar to what we have down at Odo and at Correctionville. So it'd be a very similar metal skin building. Those are basic Woodbury County maintenance sheds.
And what's the age of the one that's there now?
Well, the one up there now at the top of the hill is back in the nineteen forties. It's, it's-
I think it was a salt shed, right, originally, that was retrofitted, or?
I, I'm not sure it was a salt shed. It, it was some kind of a, it was some kind of a shop, and then they, they built on a three bay cold storage building behind it. I'm guessing we had a lot less snow removal equipment back then, but-
So some of the issues that we have-
We got five acres there at the top of the hill, I think, to replace all that ground. If I could just finish, I was looking at a purchase of about ten acres off of that property south of town. I'm guessing that'll come in somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand on top of the two point three million for the building.
I think that's fair.
You know, I, I think by the time all is said and done, we're looking probably between three and three and a half million dollars to replace that facility. I don't know what, I, I really don't have a good price on all we have. I did inquire from Joshua what we'd have to do to sell that, and it would have to go out to public sale. Advertise, the county would definitely want to put a reserve on it to prevent it from being lowballed, but we would have to go out for a public sale, which would give the city, the economic development group, and any private entities the opportunity to bid on it.
So some of the issues that we have, besides the fact that that building is old, and we've got two essentially locations there, is, and, and if we took a tour out there, you could see it, but if you're westbound on Highway twenty, and you're wanting to pull into the maintenance shed, it is a terrible intersection for people to come in, up behind you and rear end you, because it's a little knob hill. But, and like also, adversely, if the guys are going to turn out, whether they're going to turn westbound or go across the traffic, they can't see traffic coming over that hill. It's very poorly, I know that's the DOT, but it's, it's poorly designed. And then not only that, you've got a very busy gravel road, Humboldt Avenue, because that's a cut through to get up to like the community center and REC-
Golf course.
And the golf course. I mean, that is a very busy road that the county is accessing a good portion of that to get into the shed, or get into the gravel piles and dirt piles. But then also, the frontage road that's on the front side of it is also a very, very busy street, and the county guys, you know, they, they, they do their best, but they got to go in the road when they're getting salt and sand loaded into trucks and moving equipment around. And so it's, it's just not conducive for a lot of reasons. And thankfully, there hasn't been really any bad things there. Like, I mean, because there's potential daily, you know, hourly.
Yeah, we've been lucky. I think it's a credit to our guys and, and the attention they pay when they're getting out on the road out there too. They, they pay attention.
So in, in light of this discussion too, I mean, first year I was on the board of supervisors, somebody asked me the same question. We brought it to Mark here, and it didn't seem like he necessarily had a whole lot of interest unless somebody was willing to buy, and nobody was willing to pay at that point, three million that we discussed then. You know, Mark will be moving on, board will be changing. It's not something that's going to happen this year, but the proper steps to take is to have your plan of what you're going to replace it with first. And, you know, there's FTA grants, Federal Transit Authority, there's other grant funding sources for rural governments, or rural facilities that are out there that, you know, as a board of supervisors, you should look into and, and study and dig into. Make those plans, you know, maybe purchase the land up front. But, you know, that's the right way. So have the new building figured out before you're willing to sell the old, because we can't leave them stranded. And-
Yeah, for sure.
And you just never know. I mean, obviously, you know, we were discussing a new building built in a year, and it's been three years. So you don't always know how long it takes to get your building built.
Right. Well, this one, this one hopefully is a great deal less complex than the law enforcement center. But we would want to have the land in advance, and, you know, that would allow us to clean up a couple of those boneyards too.
Yeah.
If we have that property, get it fenced. You know, some of the facilities, including the gravel piles and some of that other stuff, could move out before we're fully ready to build.
Just a reminder, this item is report on committee meetings?
Yeah, we need to wrap. We're pretty much having a Mowville town hall right now. So let's, you know, we're going to hear all this and see all this if we take this tour. So, and I've been through all this conversation with Mark in previous years, and ended up at the same place, so. I did have a question for you on your first committee report on the LEC.
Okay.
The board's made clear its position on blessing you to go forth and make our opinion known. What was the comment from the city representative, or was there anything stated about the city's opinion on this, this gap year, so to speak, in maintenance?
Dan wanted to have the city council weigh in on this and give him direction as to whether to support this measure or not. Obviously, this was kind of a time sensitive issue, so there wasn't a whole lot of time to, to kind of work through those channels. I think Dan understood our plight, but they still, you know, there's just no common ground on what a repair is, what a maintenance is, what the threshold is. I don't think that they were, either one were maybe as supportive of having, because my, my vision was, is that we would allocate Kenny to spend X amount of dollars, and then could come back to have those, those funds approved by the LEC, so that if Kenny needed something, he didn't have to wait days or weeks to, to buy just a replacement part or whatever. I don't think anybody was really in favor of really any threshold for Kenny. And so, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Taylor?
So I'm appreciative of the report. I'm appreciative of you bringing forth our collective message. I do think, and if this is best safe for board concerns-
It probably is, honestly.
Okay, so then I'll make it during that time.
Yeah. Any other, unless you had like a clarifying question for his committee report? Any other reports on committee meetings?
All I have is veteran affairs was last week, but no updates. And then other, last Thursday, myself, Mark and Keith were at the Farm Bureau luncheon, so it went well. Heard from the farmers, heard their, some of their concerns, and gave an update about the LEC, so it was, it was a good time. That's all. Nothing.
Great.
Need your report on that.
And hardly any, no complaints about the roads.
True. That is, that's true. They were very, very grateful.
Take it.
Take it.
Well, mark it down. Might be ending on a high note.
This one to put on the calendar.
So, any reports? Keith?
Nope.
All right. Item sixteen, any citizen concerns?
Good evening. Pat Gill, Woodbury County Auditor. I'm here because Dennis told me I should show up and give you a heads up. You guys have a tough job, and I hope there's a little money left over here. But the, during this fiscal year, this has already been accounted for in the budget you received- you received for election administration already this year. But prior to this year, we bought two software programs. One was for MODIS, and that's Presinct Election Official. It's maintaining all that, and it allows for online training, that sort of thing, for precinct election officials. And then we also, at the same time, and both these programs, I believe, were purchased with grant dollars. And so, once you purchase those, then they become an ongoing expense, because you have to pay for the software maintenance. And the other one was 10X that we purchased, and that was the iPads that when you go to check in at the polling places, were using that technology. Very helpful, very secure. So we weren't able to place that on the budget last year, but we had to expand it. So that's $25,000. And Dennis wanted me to make sure I was giving you a heads-up, because we will be asking for a budget amendment for that. And then also, our, uh, voting machine vendor has recommended an update, too, that, and has security upgrades for the machines, so gotta do it. And so that's probably another $10,000. So just wanted, at Dennis's request, I'm here to let you know that that's what we're facing for the rest of this fiscal year. Thank you.
And the reason I request and be here, that the board does not like surprises when we come up to budget amendments. They want to know ahead of time what's happening. That's why I've had to come forward to amend his current fiscal year budget.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Just, sorry. I was just going to ask a clarifying question. So essentially, is it $35,000 for this fiscal year, and then that'll be an ongoing that we need to amend?
No, the $10,000 for the machine, uh, voting machine vendors, that's just a one-time cost that, because we already pay software for them. But there, there's an update to this, and that has to do with a security update. So that's really just a one-time expense. The other two will be ongoing, and they are already in the budget for next year, that you already received.
Okay, so there's nothing different there?
No.
Could we potentially have that, and I don't want to, I know we're not deliberating or discussing, but could that be something that we could take care of through gaming revenue on a subsequent, uh, meeting agenda?
Out of what now?
Is the $10,000, because it's a one-time expense, something that we could potentially take care of through gaming at a subsequent meeting? I know we can't do it tonight.
Yeah, we're just narrowing this gaming down, and you aren't going to have any money left for next year, so anybody comes in, you have to tell them no. That's all you can do.
Well, if it's a necessary expense.
And the $25,000, that'll have to come out of cash reserves. Both will be 35,000 out of cash reserves or find other funding sources.
And we don't know if it's going to be the total 35,000 as we get closer to the, we'll see how much money we have left over, but-
And budget amendments we do in May.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, sorry about walking off on you. Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns? Hearing none. Item 17, board concerns. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you. I just do want to make this mention. Thank you for going to the LEC authority with the request. I'm disappointed that the request wasn't entertained. I thought it was very reasonable, especially given that there is $1.2 million, and that maintenance fund by May 1st, unanticipated, over and above. And I do think philosophically, we need to work this out, because as I believe you've rightly alluded to, when you're a tenant in a, in a building, typically, you're not asked to pay for major expenses. And the double irony of this whole thing is, especially when it's your money anyway. I mean, all of this is the county taxpayers' money. So it becomes even more of a heartburn for the public right now. And I realize that we're all cooperatively working to get this building done. But when they've already been taxed for all of that money, they've been paying taxes for that, then to go back to them again and say, "We don't have any dollars to be able to account for, we're going to have to tax again," that's, that's difficult. And so I do think that it's up to this board to look at the $170,000 and think if we need to whittle that away, because legally, they're responsible for that building in the relationship. So just something that I know needs to be worked out, but thanks for carrying that message.
Any other board concerns?
The only, only one I have, it's regarding the Salix Drainage District. I called and talked to the, the Farmers Drainage District, because I, I've been hearing through the grave mine, there's some potentially misinformation back and forth, and now there's a, a group that doesn't want to be a part of it, so forth and so on. Anyhow, I would just, for us on our side, I would just caution us not to take this on or run it. I think we should encourage Salix to talk with the Farmers Drainage District. They are not, there are many more options that are out there, and I, I think we need to be cautious as a board of trying to, trying to help navigate or find solutions. When there's a solution, the Farmers Drainage District has solutions. Salix is not without an option. I, I think there's been some miscommunications and potentially feelings hurt and/or stubbornness to not negotiate or work through incorporation of an updated Farmers Drainage District. So that's, I just want to caution us on that. And I'm, it's a little sad in that the entities have separated and they're trying to form a new district, when I think there were some, there's some solutions that are currently on the table that could be, that could be found, and save the city of Salix a lot of money, so.
And I would just echo, I think we had a, like, a two-hour meeting one night about them wanting, or us wanting to give them the space and time to navigate those waters, no pun intended, so.
Right, yeah, yeah. That's all, that's all that I have.
I guess to clarify something I said earlier, I said FTA grant. That would be if we had a bus stop at the building. It would be a USDA Rural Facilities Grant, so. Yeah. It's called Communities Facilities Direct Grant.
Thank you.
I have one more thing, sorry. Sorry, I just realized my notes. One thing I'll shout out to Mark Nara, was talking with him this week, a couple of times. Just want to say thank you for him. We are doing that Elk Road Creek, Elk, sorry, Elk Creek project that turnabout there, and just want to say to some of our, I've had some county residents call me and say, "Hey, they're going to have to be walking through the rain and inclement weather." But the county is providing golf carts on our, out of our costs to help for them to shuttle residents back and forth. Residents can drive the golf carts, you know, to their homes where that will be affected. And so, the county, I just want to say the county and Mark is doing a great job making sure that there's the least amount of inconvenience to our citizens. And I've just had some very concerned, I'll put that in quotes, concerned citizens call. And, but just to clarify, I'll be following up with them, that we will be making sure that they're taken care of. And thank you, Mark, for just-
Do you want to mention that public meeting?
Oh, yes. There's a public meeting on-
February 22nd.
February 22nd from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, correct?
4:00 to 6:00 PM.
At Morningside Assembly, Morningside Assembly of God, right there in the corner of Old Lakeport and Elk Creek. Yep, so, yeah, public information and to come and find out more. And I'd encourage residents to come to that, because I think there's, there was some, some, once again, misinformation going around that Mark definitely cleared up, so.
We've worked very hard to make sure we're accommodating emergency vehicles on a 24/7. We know we have elderly residents out there, and design changes were made to make sure that we have that 24-hour day access.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess I'm up for budget, that's why I'm waiting around.
That's all I have, Chairman.
All right, any other board concerns? All right, we'll move into item 18, Budget Review Discussion for FY '25, starting with the Secondary Roads Fund, Roadside Management, Rural Basic, page four to three. I think that was all wages. You know, last year, you gave us an increase for vehicle maintenance and repair to take care of some of the vehicles that are starting to get a little longer in the tooth. And, you know, it, it looks like we ought to be in pretty good shape with the proposals turned in, same, same as last year for the other expenses.
Both of your numbers, just follow your formula?
What's that?
Do both of your numbers in here follow the formula as far as what they have in the past?
Exactly. They're the same dollars as the 23, 24 budget. The only change is to any of the budgetary items was pay increases. The 3% raise applied to the weed commissioner's salary.
I'll move to receive.
Second motion by Raddick. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Passes 5-0. Item A2 is Secondary Roads.
We include the whole budget, line item for line item. This is a kind of an odd fund. We back into it by figuring out the minimum levy, what is care over is going to be, and then he divides it all out to projects, construction, maintenance, new equipment, all those kind of things.
Yeah. Last year, the board did give us some extra money to help cover interest, or, I mean, inflation. The board gave us an extra $131,000. This year, we requested the same total dollars, and that's a 3-cent reduction in levy to get that same money with the new valuations. So it's roughly 3 cents cheaper. I'd like to keep the same money. We are above the minimum for this year. And every, every dollar helps right now.
I'll move to receive.
Second motion by Raddick. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B is Planning and Zoning Budget out of Rural Basic.
On this particular one, we need to add 18,000 worth of revenue in the building permits. That was omitted there, and it should be about 18,000 to add in on building permits.
Okay.
So that helps us there in Rural Basic.
Well, we basically try to operate, of course, within our means and cut where necessary, of course. And one of the things that'd be nice, I know the legislature talked about, is the public notifications and everything. Seems like we're paying a lot more on that, as we have all these different things pop up with solar, renewable, and our, our typical operations. So that's, that's always a concern, so.
Any other questions? I'll move to receive with the addition of $18,000 in revenue.
Second?
Second by Bittenger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thanks.
On this particular budget here, we've always funded out local option sales tax. That's why I have a budget currently. The proposal would be to move it back to the Rural Basic. The reason why, we have about 161,000. The difference there, we take out our, our Rural Basic reserves. That would add 100, I believe, 184,000 to our gaming revenues. So I guess it's a funding issue, paying out of Rural Basic, not local option sales tax. And this would be a good year to start it.
Well, it's noted as being paid out of Rural Basic, so that can-
Yep.
That change can be made.
That did change, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Item C, County Supervisors, Subitem 1, Sub-Subitem A, out of, starting with Hard Rock Gaming Fees Non-Tax, first is Woodbury County Senior Meal Program.
Okay, let's go back to the page here. Okay, 40, and these are under the Supervisors tab?
Yep. And these are funded in order to leverage other state or federal funds.
Correct.
That's the county's practice.
The two in there is, I added a third one there that they always ask every year, so I put it in there. It's always taken out every year, because we don't have, it doesn't meet qualifications.
Which one, which one does not?
That'd be the new, new, is Centers Against Abuse and Sexual Assault.
Okay, well, we're not on that one yet.
Okay, nope. So that one there is the same dollar amount. Forty-two, 46,250.
I'll, I'll move to receive. Item A.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Passes 5-0. Item B is Suluon Regional Transit System.
I'm sorry, Meals and Wizzles, 12,760. I apologize. Yeah, and it's the same as last year.
Okay.
The request from Serts is the same dollar amount, 35,948, and that does leverage federal money.
All move to receive. Second by Taylor. Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Passes 5-0. Item C is the Centers Against Abuse and Sexual Assault, but this does not leverage federal funds or state funds.
No.
And so therefore be picking winners and losers, which is something the county has not preferred to do with discretionary gaming funds.
Correct.
So I'll move to deny.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Passes 5-0. Item 2 is Infrastructure and Economic Development Non-Tax Funds, starting with A, the I-29 New Interchange Grant Application.
That, if we don't spend this year, is carried over next year. That is now a new figure of 89,000.
Is this a budget to receive? Dennis? Or spending allocation?
We were putting this out of gaming, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no, we had this out of local option.
Oh, was that local?
Yes, because it does benefit the rural area.
Yeah, so that motion back there on gaming should be local option sales tax. I apologize.
That's okay. Can I go ahead and make that motion? Because I don't think we can just say that's what Dennis wanted. In other words, you're suggesting that the 89,000 that we talked about, the 19 plus the 70, not be from gaming? And I know we did 19 from gaming today, but should we go ahead and make a motion for the 89,000 on a local option sales tax? Is that, am I picking up what you're laying down?
Yes.
Okay, I would make that motion, that we fund the infrastructure economic development, or the I-29 New Interchange Grant Application with 89,000 in local option sales tax.
It's buzzed this year, so if we don't spend it, carries over in the next year. So we're covered either way.
Sure.
Or do we just amend 12B that we passed earlier and said gaming? Because 12B was a-
Yes, that's where it changed. We got to make a correction. Instead of gaming, it's still co-op to sales tax.
Well, this motion overrides the last one.
Yes. Yes.
Are we okay with that?
Sure.
No, I, I think you need to, you're going back to item 12.
I don't, I don't think we're really going back. I think we're suggesting replacing what was done earlier. I mean, we can go back if we, but usually don't revisit, do you?
We can move to reconsider. With the original motion seconded, that would have been you and me, or Jeremy?
So tell me again what you're going back to, item 12A, and you're replacing that-
It's 12B.
12B with a, to fund 89,000 from local option sales tax, to replace the motion that was previously stated.
Correct.
Okay.
Was the motion only for 19, do you know, Michelle, or was it for the?
It was on the-
The motion was for 19,000.
Okay, so I-
To be from gaming.
So I think we need a new motion altogether, because what we're suggesting is not only that 19, but also the 70 from where, whenever-
Local option sales tax.
You'd already done that. You're adding 19,000 to the 70.
I thought we did 70 from gaming before you had said 70 from-
I think you just misspoke.
Okay, no, no, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So do you need a motion and a second on that?
I have a motion by you. I do not have a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick, to-
Fund a total 89,000 out of local option sales tax.
Yes.
For the I-29 interchange.
So we would override it?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Passes 5-0. Item B, Event Center, year seven of 10. I'll second the motion by Raddick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Passes 5-0. Item C, Suluon Initiative. What is that allocation, proposal?
That one was 25,000. Yes. Yes. All of this is local option now.
Move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes 5-0. Item D, Woodbury County Fair.
I believe that's same allocation, but there are some represented here.
Hi, there, Jason Ingram at the Woodbury County Fair, Board President. We provide a venue for the annual Woodbury County Fair. 2023, we hosted 520 FFA and 4H exhibitors to take, to show their place and their hard work. We had about 96,500 people come through our gates. The 2023 fair, our bonus auction had 137 exhibitors, 136 bidders, which created 108,000 that went back to the kids for their projects for the following year. We had 400 participants in our open class department, such as bucket, bucket cabs to anything in the open class building. We're not only a venue for the fair, but we also host many activities throughout the year, such as weddings, receptions, graduations, livestock workshops, weigh-ins, tri-state ropers, Iowa Hot Rod Rally, two-day event, Iowa High School Rodeo, three-day event. And each activity brings many people to the fairgrounds and to the town and to our, to our county. 2023, excuse me, 2022, we were selected from 16 Northwest Iowa County Fairs with a Blue Ribbon Award. It's for outstanding community service for your fair. 2023, we were proud to have Marina McGowan, daughter of Chris and Kathleen, represent us at Woodbury County Fair at the Iowa State Fair Queen Competition. She received out of 104 contestants, the Outstanding Leadership Award. We have improvement projects going on for the open class building to re, to finish the interior on that and for the show ring replacement. We take great, great pride in the fair and enjoyed watching it grow over what it is today. We appreciate your continued support in the youth of Woodbury County.
Thank you for all that you do. I'd move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any other discussion? Thank you both for coming and waiting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes 5-0. Item E is the Simco Improvement Regional Housing.
That is another, that is another one that receives grants.
As a trust fund, basically.
Yes.
And that's how we pay our local match to there every year. So for historical reference.
I'd move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes 5-0. Item F is Simco Memberships. This is our cost share with cities.
For the cities that participate, yes.
Okay. How is this compared to last year?
Ah, same.
Same?
Yep.
And the dues had gone up last year, so there was no increase this year that I remember. Again, the communities really appreciate us doing this. We do have a higher percentage turnout by the local communities in their Simco membership. And of course, this is the avenue that a lot of the communities mostly use to apply for grants, both federal and state. So it's, it's a well-used donation, so to speak. I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes 5-0. Item G is Western Iowa Tourism.
That's 500. We do that every year.
How much is it?
500, I believe.
500,000?
500.
Okay. Maybe it's getting a little late and I was like, oh.
Jeremy.
I'll move to receive, given that's that much.
To receive how much?
500.
Dollars, zero cents. Well, second motion by Taylor. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes 5-0. Item H is Iowa's West Coast.
That's 2,000. I, I believe that's the same also.
Well, second motion by Raddick. Lot of good scuba diving in Iowa's West Coast. I'll tell you what, we need to support it with everything we can.
Right.
Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes 5-0. Item D is the Debt Service Fund.
Okay, that fund there does cover all of our loans. We have CIP loans, we have the lease agreement, and we have a new CIP that I did add in there of 194,000, I believe the first year. Then it goes down a little bit because we pay a little extra interest because we're going to get the money received in May. In that case there, and the reason I had to do that, because the day you did pass a pre-certification public hearing, set the dates for March 6th, we have to have that done. So when we do publish our maximum levy, we have the total dollars in there. Then March 26th, we have our regular hearing for the maximum total. That maximum total can be reduced as the board feels.
When's our last date to affect the budget? When are we, and I know we can't go up, April 26th is the last day?
26th, the last day. What we're putting in there is the maximum levies we can make. From there, we can reduce it. They eliminated that one where we had to have the super vote. That's gone. Now it takes a simple majority.
I'm just wondering when we said, hey, we want to take a second look at this, when's our drop dead date to, hey, you better plan on, is it April?
Tax asking?
Right.
That'd probably be.
I believe March 2nd is when we have to have it entered on the Department of Management site.
And when are we done with budget hearings then? Other receiving?
We're going to be open right up till May or April 26th. We're going to actually have our public hearing. What this does, it sets.
I think he's asking what, what do we have next week for budget?
Oh, next week?
And is that it? There's nothing else hanging out after that?
I gotta add the liability in there because we need to get that in there. So next week, we do have, let me get it here. Because we had to move juvenile detention to next week. So next week, we got the medical examiner. I don't know where that's even going. If there's been discussions, I don't know. We got a number plugged in. We'll have to live with it. May have to add to it. It may be less. Probably be adding to it. Then we have WIC. They want to go last because they want to make sure their budget is received. Kind of going through cases or the deductions from our share.
But after next week, we should be done with budgets, is that?
Yes. I'm going to have a miscellaneous reviews of all funds. Well, juvenile detention, federal program, I'm going to add the liability, self-liability fund down there. And that, as far as I know, is it.
So nothing planned after next week?
No.
Okay.
The only thing planned is public hearings.
Okay. All right. So unless there's something that comes up that we want to put on, next week will be?
Yeah, 27th, we could do it still then, at that point.
And then March 2nd is when we need to be, like, what we publish is what's in there?
What happens is on March 2nd, all of the cities and I believe the county has to have their information entered on the Department of Management site. And then we and the auditor's office will pull a data file that will produce a letter that is sent to all the taxpayer notifying them of when the public hearing is going to be. And so they've recommended to all the cities and the county not to hold their public hearing until at least March 25th.
Okay.
And we're actually going to do it 26th. So they have five days to look at what they're getting in the mail. Yeah, we'll have the numbers heard before March 2nd. It'll be pretty much done. And now it'll be the maximum. We're going to ask the taxes. We can always reduce it later.
All right. So is there a motion to receive the debt service levy?
I'll move it.
No.
No? Oh, how was that? Yeah. Motion by Taylor, second by me.
And then are you making that transfer with the reserves?
No.
Not yet.
That'll be coming when we get down, we get to review that next week.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'll add that to it.
Yep.
Any transfers additional like tax and general sub, you know, we're raising it to balance out general basic, I'll have that next week.
Okay, great. And do you have that break down on non-unspent funds due to the LAC delay?
Yes.
For others? So we can just have it as, have it in writing to understand? Yes.
And that reflects what happened today.
Okay. Well, you can hand this out later. So any other discussion?
Can you receive that document? I have had requests for that in the past.
Sure.
Move to receive this.
Second.
Well, we have a motion on the floor already to receive the budget. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes 5-0. And I'll move to receive the financial recap summary distributed by the Budget Director.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes 5-0. Anything else for the good of the cause, public, the board, or anything else? Hearing none?
Night in Columbus Fish Fry at the Mack's Up Church is this Friday in Mowville. And yours truly will be running the dishwasher because apparently that is all I'm good for. But I'll be there.
Oh, you're, you're, you're good for more than that.
Best fish around, I promise. Mowville, Mack's Up Church, 4:30 to 7:00.